I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. We lost a longtime teacher, Margaret Peg Scott. She worked in the school district, I'm not sure for how long. How long was she in the district, please?
Yeah, talk about to the microphone. I think it was over twenty years, but I don't have, I don't have.
She actually, I see it on the notes here. Her years of service were from nineteen sixty-six to nineteen eighty-two. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have a motion to accept the minutes from April eighteenth.
Remove second.
From April eighteenth.
Second.
Got that, Jason?
I do. And you're doing online voting?
Mm-hmm. Are you asking me?
Yes.
Or are you telling me?
Yes, we are, yes.
And I believe we have to do a public show of hands also, correct?
You call for the vote.
All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Were those the only minutes?
Yes.
Now we take a public forum. And we will start the public forum. Speakers have three minutes. And the first speaker is Jennifer Bonnet, and her subject is recess.
This is not my favorite spot. Can I hold it? Yes, I can. Yay, okay. So I'm standing here tonight as a parent, a teacher, and the president of the PTO. Last week, the elementary staff was sent an email concerning extra recess, which I don't know exactly what that means, because our students don't get recess. They get lunch with maybe five to fifteen minutes outside, depending on the day, depending on the class, depending on how the lunches are rolling that day. But we were directed not to not take our classes outside for any extra or extended recess, because academics are still happening, as if we were not aware that academics were still happening and that there are seven weeks left in the school year. This directive came shortly after the three-through-five state math tests. After our students had sat for two-and-a-half hours, we are now not allowed to take them outside for some much-needed physical activity. This is being stressed because of academics, yet right before the state tests, AIS services, morning and afternoon, are done. Homework club is done. We are splitting up classes in the elementary school, because there's a shortage of subs right before the state tests. Our classes were added four, five extra students, happens a lot in three, four, and fifth, third, fourth, and fifth grade, excuse me. And then, on those days where we were told not to go outside, the classrooms on the second grade floor, the fourth grade floor is what we call it, my room alone was eighty-three point six degrees, and I was told I couldn't take my class outside. We have so many more important things to focus on in the elementary than the much-needed outdoor physical activity for our kids. We're asking that you trust your staff to know when it's appropriate to have fifteen, twenty minutes outside a couple of days a week, and we're asking instead that we look at things that are much more important and much needed in the elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnet. Mrs. Wiles, would you like to address?
I'd like to address the comments if I can. I too recently got a copy of the email, and I just want to clarify, there were some other things in that email, which included that if you chose to go outside for a lesson, or just to let the office know. So I know that there was an issue last week down in the elementary school, where there were teachers out, and the office did not know where those classes were. So I think we need to open up communication about that. I also think that nobody is opposed to recess here. I spoke to Mr. Althouse, who came on behalf of the ETS RPA, and I would appreciate an opportunity to have a discussion about this. I spoke to the board about the concern about, you know, not knowing where students are and teachers are out in the building, so I think we have a lot of work to do on this. But no one's opposed to recess. We are, we'd also like to see some structured recess, and exactly what's happening, who's going out when, so we don't have, you know, ten classes outside at the same time. So I think, Ms. Bonnet, I'm just telling you, we're going to take this under advisement, and we are going to have an ongoing discussion coming up. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gergie?
I wanted to remind people, there is a school board election coming up, and I meet the candidates night on Thursday, I believe at six PM, at the community room of the library. And there are certain issues I would like, I'm putting, I'm hoping to get a letter into a paper about some issues I would, issues I would like to get addressed, and prepare press candidates, if I can get my questions in on that in the evening. It's school board election season again, it's time to have a discussion of the issues. I'm sitting out this one, but usually what I want to do is just that. It's time there was a greater probing of the candidates as to where they actually stand, and what are the interest factors that govern them. For example, do they have relatives that work for the school? What are their ambitions as to careers in education, both for themselves and their relations? Is the answer to everything putting more money into people's pockets? Is it time to say enough is enough for those whose salaries are over a hundred thousand a year, which is not an inconsiderable proportion? What about transparency in negotiating contracts? I've often put forward the idea that the design of contracts is a way to reform tenure at the local lever, level, rather than depend on it coming from the dictat of the almighty state. Simply stop raising salaries and make all future increases attach to discretionary work increments. What about having people starting out in mixed positions, part teacher, part teacher aide, and tenure them one piece at a time? I would like to know what the candidates think of these issues. So, I just mean to prep you, and I would, and I'll give you a little copy of, Mike, to all of you, I will put a few down here.
Thank you, Mr. Gergie. And Cheryl LaSalle, to discuss, Sharif LaSalle's letter?
Sharif.
Sharif, sorry.
And that was in your academic?
Yes.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm reading a letter from my son. He wasn't able to be here, and so I'm just going to read this letter, which he says he brought to the school board as well. So I just want to make sure that it was noted and remembered. Topic: Playing for Change. Greetings, my name is Sharif LaSalle. My peers and I have an idea to promote the mentoring program. We are suggesting a basketball sports event. I would like to share with the school board our thoughts for change. We attended Ellenville School System from kindergarten to high school. I played the sports of football, basketball, and tennis under the leadership of great coaches. I am fortunate to have played with teammates that I consider friends and my family. Everyone who attends school would not have the desire to play sports and must seek out their own passion. Those youth may need reassurance to even challenge themselves. Definitely, my disruptive behavior in school would not have been a factor if I had additional resources to guide me. If I had known, starting in elementary through resources like a mentor, that a three-point O GPA was a successful goal to aim towards, it would have been motivational. This type of encouragement would have been an incentive to achieve and maintain the three-point O, strive for the honor roll, and eventually the four-point O GPA as well. Guidance counselors were helpful, but not comfortable to disclose information about school problems. Many of my classmates felt the same discomfort. Through middle school to high school, I was involved in church, vice president for the Ellenville NAACP Youth Unit, a reading tutor, a peer mediator, and a volunteer for the United Way. In my home, I was empowered with life skills and good values. My mom was stern, concerned, and always sharing knowledge about my family legacy. Still, with all of these tools and family rules, I managed to struggle along with my peers as we searched for our identities. In high school, I was fortunate enough to have the experience of how mentoring can shape a youth's mindset towards freedom of struggle and success. In my opinion, a mentor gives a youth an opportunity to interact at their own pace. A mentoring support system should be in place by first grade to create a positive school foundation. The Ellenville Men's Association had a mentoring program in the school system that I was unaware of. I was struggling socially and academically from middle school to high school. In high school, Mr. Conrad Clair from the Men's Association noticed me one day in the main office while I was on detention. Mr. Clair challenged me to memorize a quote from the African president, Mr. Nelson Mandela. The quote to be memorized was, "There is no passion to be found playing small and settling for a life that is less than the one that you are capable of living." It took some thought, but I took the challenge. I was very proud of this accomplishment. I felt that I wanted more of this easy task. Mr. Clair requested that I recite this same quote every day for one week. Each time that Mr. Clair saw me in the hallway, my responsibility was to recite this same quote to him, Coach Tremel, or Mr. Fred Hart, also mentors. After one week, I decided that I wanted to learn from this collaboration of men, civil human rights activist, deacon, security officer, pastor, truant officer, coach, principal, and teacher. Whatever pressure I felt on any given day, it was a minimal pressure once I talked to one of them and received an encouraging word. I received a small notebook with positive quotes printed in it called Daily Affirmations. I received this notebook from Mr. Clair that I carried every day. I was asked to show my progress report each marking period. Together, we discussed how to improve academic difficulties. I also received literature about future college tours and planned school events of possible, of positivity. In my home, my mom had printed out all of the affirmations and posted them on the wall. These were instructions inside the book to recite in the mirror upon rising a morning affirmation. I faced the mirror each morning to perform this task. I learned to appreciate all of the communication and shared this information with my close friends. Our mentors were Mr. Conrad Clair, Mr. Fred Hart, Pastor Raymond Younger, Coach Tremel, Principal Carl Pavone, teacher Mr. Philip Althouse. These mentors kept in constant communication with us about every aspect of our lives with resources to improve our academic and social growth. I relocated with my family to Atlanta, Georgia, for my senior year in high school. I had a rough time adjusting to a different state and school environment. I had left all of my support system in New York. I even had a tough time during enrollment in a high school in Georgia. During this period, I was inside of a school, high school, waiting for a decision from the school administration. I decided that I needed to call some of my support system. I reached out by phone to one of my mentors, Pastor Raymond Younger, and told him about my concerns. Pastor Younger told me to walk away to a quiet location. He then proceeded to pray with me on the phone with words of encouragement for my completion of high school and his admiration for my courage. I did not attend the public school system, but was offered a scholarship into a private school program to play basketball. I graduated high school from Southwest Atlanta Christian Academy in Atlanta, Georgia. When I graduated high school, I was accepted to attend Morehouse College in Atlanta, Georgia. My mentors, Principal Carl Pavone and Pastor Raymond Younger, were notified about my college acceptance, collecting an offering from my mentors and sent it to me to show their continued support. I greatly appreciated the concern and was pleased that they were still a part of my life. Now, as a twenty-year-old adult, I have attended college and part of the workforce. I feel that Ellenville youth and community will only benefit from a mentor program. We have had our share of academic and social obstacles, but victorious. We know that our mentors saved our lives. Our mentors will support our efforts, and they still support our efforts. My peers and I would like to pay it forward and participate through service for the efforts of promoting an effective and positive mentor program. In honor of my mentors who have transitioned to rest in peace, thank you for caring, to Mr. Conrad Clair and Mr. Fred Hart. Respectfully, Sharif LaSalle. And then he added a playing for change, which I know you already have, so I just wanted to make sure that that was remembered from my son, because he couldn't be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, someone else to report, I don't know, Vince. Okay, Mr. Napoli, you'll give us our budget review, please?
Need to give me a moment, please?
Do we have any technical difficulties?
No, I needed to log on as myself, and then find the PowerPoint. No difficulties.
Opera, life opera.
Why does everybody assume the tech guy has technical difficulties?
It's just nice to watch.
So tonight is our budget hearing. I know we spent many hours reviewing the budget, and a question that I get every year is, after we've, after the board has adopted the budget, why do we have to have a budget hearing? And the truth is, it's required by law. Last week, seven days prior to today, the budget booklets were distributed throughout the schools, throughout the community, in the libraries, and in the post office, so if someone wanted to have a, a paper copy to go and review it, they were able to do that. They are to remain in those locations and not take it home. If anyone wants any, to view their own documents, welcome to come to the school, I'll be happy to give them a copy. So tonight, we'll be talking about the program component, that's the instructional part of the budget. The administrative component, that's what is involved with running the offices, and then the capital component, which is pretty much summarize it as buildings and grounds. Our budget increase this year is three point nine four percent, just under fifty-two million This slide breaks it down. We're required to present the budget, and it's actually, in the, I brought a copy of the newsletter. The newsletter gets home, gets mailed home to every community member, that we have the mailing address on file, and in the, in tonight's presentation, and in this document, it has those three budget components. That's required, again by law, that we show the budget, or present the budget, on the program component, the capital component, and the administrative component. You can see on this slide that the administrative component, that's what's involved in the instruction of our students, is up two point three nine percent. I'm sorry, administrative is what runs the offices, program, five point four one percent, which is the instructional side, and then capital. Capital debt is down five point five five percent, but that's mostly because of a lot of the debt from when we built the new, new wing of the elementary school, the middle school and part of the high school. We're going to be finished paying that, that will bounce back up next year when we start paying for the capital project that we're wrapping up this year. So I'll give you a quick overview on what's involved in the administrative component, the Board of Ed, the District Clerk's Office, insurance, our auditing services, the administration of three of the, of the buildings, special education, any legal expenses, our benefits, that's all expensed through the administrative component, the administrative part of our budget. Program, that's instruction, whether it's teaching salaries, summer school, after-school programs, professional development, transportation, that's all involved in the program component. And then capital, health and safety, buildings and grounds, our debt service, anything that goes involved with the maintenance and running of our buildings. Our revenues, we've seen this already, what our revenues look like, we don't anticipate seeing any increase in our federal aid, that's the money we get from the federal government. Other revenues could be pilots, health and welfare from other schools, when a, when a child comes here to a private school, charges for non-resident tuition, we don't anticipate seeing any increase in that. Our BOSI's refund would be part of that as well. We did see a nice increase in state aid this year, so that's reflected in the, in this part of it. We are anticipating assigning some fund balance, so that's, fund balance is monies that we have in reserves to cover our expenses for next year. And then, of course, our tax levy, which is an increase of one point six five percent, I'll jump into that in a second, but that is at the tax cap, or at the tax limit. Some ways that we're looking to save money, I'll tell you, this year, we put LED lights in all the classrooms. We're actually seeing a substantial savings in our, in our electric costs, and so we've reduced that expense. We always try to share services with other schools through BOSI's, or the other component districts, and we're wrapping up our capital projects, so we expect to see some savings in our fuel oil expense, and those line items have been decreased in the budget. I'll quickly go through the tax cap formula. The way it works is, we start off with last year's tax levy. The state gives us a growth factor on how our community is growing. This year, the minimum number you can have is one point oh, we're at the one point oh. We add in last year's pilots. A pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes. I can share with anyone who has any, any questions about any of the pilots that we would have. We have five of them. We subtract out prior year exemptions. A prior year exemption would be capital local share, so that's monies that we, that we have to spend locally for any of our borrowings, our debt for putting up buildings. There are other things that are involved in that as well, but for us, it's only the capital local share. CPI, if you remember years ago, this was touted as a two percent tax cap, which means that a tax levy cannot increase more than two percent, or CPI, you know, whichever is less. So right now, we're capped at the two point, the two percent. CPI is two point one three, so we can't actually go up to two point one three, but there are, there are exemptions. Unfortunately for us, our exemptions this year are not as high as they, as they have been in the past, so that puts our tax levy increase this year at the tax cap, at the tax levy limit of one point six five percent. Am I good so far? So, a question that comes up quite frequently is, what does this mean to me as the taxpayer? So I'm going to jump right down to the bottom. So, across the top of the slide, we have our three towns that are in our school district. For a homeowner who has an estimated value of their home of a hundred thousand dollars, their monthly tax bill, or their annual tax bill will go up, on average, twenty-one hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars. You can see what it would look like for each homeowner, on an average of just under three dollars per month for the average taxpayer whose property is valued at a hundred thousand dollars. So if you have a two hundred thousand dollar home, on average, you, you can estimate that you're, if you're in the town of Mamakating, it'll go up six dollars and sixty-four cents. With every year, the state gives you a star exemption. In the budget notice here, it's on average seven, seven hundred twenty-five dollars per homeowner. If you have the enhanced star, you do have to apply every year, or reapply, I should say. If we, if, for some reason that the budget does fail, and we have to go to a contingent budget, that means that our tax levy is capped at what it was last year, and then there are some non-contingent items that have to be removed, anything that are in the equipment lines have to come out. So what that means is that the board has to decide whether or not you want to spend more of our fund balance, or cut. That's really what it comes down to. So the tax levy is capped at last year, so the increase that we have in the tax levy, two hundred seventy-three thousand dollars, comes away from our revenues. Some frequently asked, asked questions, is there any benefit to the district if the budget is defeated? No, like I just said, the tax levy remains at what it was last year. How do I vote? You can do absentee ballot. The budget is here in the high school media center, on Tuesday, the fifteenth, from eight AM to eight PM. Couple years ago, we went to electronic voting, we're going to have that again this year. If you can't make it, you can fill out an absentee ballot. And one thing that I read in the onboard, is that the person that is doing the absentee ballot actually has to request and pick up the absentee ballot, that's, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Thank you. And like I said, it's next Tuesday, here, eight AM to eight PM. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Napoli. So we'll go on to the board concerns and comments, and the board president obviously is out tonight, so is there anyone on the board who would like a moment? John?
Yes, I just wanted to let everybody know that the Hall of Fame Committee has met several times, and I'm proud to announce that at the next board meeting, we will announce the inaugural class of the Ellenville High School Athlete Call of Fame.
Very nice, very nice, thank you. Good work, good work. Mr. Story?
Yes, please. Mrs. Bonnet had mentioned her class being at eighty-three point six degrees. We've discussed several times air conditioning in the rooms. I would like to know where that's at. We've been discussing it for several months, and with the weather now approaching, I would like to know. I would also like to ask, with the whole recess that was discussed, if the, if the staff members, tell the principal where they're going to be. They are still allowed to go outside for recess, correct?
Well, you know, Wayne, it's interesting. I would have liked the opportunity to have a discussion about recess, to get all of the concerns, which didn't happen, but I'm sure I will go down, and I'm sure we're going to have a meeting, and I'll get all the concerns.
Thank you.
We, we're just asking if there's going to be an outdoor lesson, that the building be contacted. I think that, I'll put a copy of that email in the next packet, so you can see it, and I'll report back to the board on exactly where we are.
Thank you.
And as far as the air conditioning, I'll defer to Mr. Napoli. Know that we've been talking about getting it in as soon as we could, I know we're in May. There was a delay in ordering air conditioners. We tried to order many air conditioners, we've had the electricians in to various parts of the building, putting the, the lines in that needed to happen, and we're in the process of preparing for that, and I, I know you've ordered the air conditioners, and there was a delay in, in the delivery, because they weren't available to us right now. So as soon as we have them available, we're ready, if I'm wrong, we're ready to go and to install, as soon as we get them.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Story. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to share and contribute tonight? No? Okay, then we're going down to, the student representative is not here, so Mrs. Wiles.
So a few things this evening. I want to inform the board that the senior class has decided that the alternate site of graduation, they've had a vote, will be at Sullivan County Community College. If it is sunny and the weather permits, will be out on the football field, but otherwise, I've been told by the high school that there was a vote, and for the students that voted, they voted the alternate site to be Sullivan County Community College, which, after last year, has its advantages, there'll be more room for people, there are no limits on tickets, and we're working with Mr. L and the vendor to make sure that we address, hopefully as best we can, some of the sound issues that we had. So, the senior class wrote an excellent letter. Mr. Pavone is, and I had, I believe I had information in the packet about, they're going to be decorating their caps this year. They, I did, they, I think they did an excellent job outlining some criteria, and they've been working with the high school administrators, so I'm pretty proud of this class, they too have a voice, and we'll see a little bit of a change at the ceremony, whether it's inside or out, we're hoping that it's out. The PTO and the NAACP is sponsoring the annual Meet the Candidates event, that's going to be this Thursday, at, I believe, six o'clock, in the Ellenville Public Library, there's information in the packet about that. I've also been asked to share that on Friday, from four to seven, at the Also been asked to share that on Friday, from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Hunt Memorial Building, we're going to have the second annual art show opening. And I would encourage everybody, board members, community members, staff members, if you can get over there, it was a real treat and a great opportunity to see our student work from all the different grade levels exhibited. So it's Fridays the opening from 4:00 to 7:00, and then the art show will continue Monday to Wednesday from 4:00 to 6:00. The school board election is held the third Tuesday across the state. Saw the budget presentation of the hearing. The vote will be here in the media center from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 15. The packet includes important dates to remember. We're at the wind down now, we have about six and a half weeks of school left. And there's many different events and celebrations and recognitions coming up. So please pay attention to that piece of information. And then just finally, May 24th, I do want to just bring up, please let Nafisa know if you haven't, if you'll be attending the Ulster County BOSI School Board's sponsored Distinguished Friends of Education, where Ken and Joan Beck will be honored from Ellenville. And that's all I have this evening.
Very good, thanks a lot, Superintendent Wiles. And Mr. Napoli, you're up next.
So I know this is my report, but I'd like to point out that there are some recent law changes, one of them being effective July 1st. In grade 6 through 12, we're required to have feminine hygiene products in every girl's bathroom for free use of students. So we're meeting with the vendor tomorrow to talk about how we can actually get that rolled out in all the bathrooms. In addition, the governor passed a, or he put in for, and it was passed, a no lunch shaming law. So there are still some schools that take lunches away from children. They shame the kids, they embarrass the kids to bring their money in. We have a, our lunch meal charge policy is pretty fair. But I have removed the section where, you know, a child would get a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. They would get a full reimbursable meal, but it wouldn't be a meal of the child's choice. Now, starting the next school year, they'd be able to get whatever meal that they wanted going through the lunch line. And then it's incumbent upon the business office to reclaim any funds when a parent has a meal balance. We are not allowed, there are some rules that follow that. And then the laws are outlined in my report as PDFs, and they're also available out on the website. Not our website, but the state's website. Any questions?
Vince, thank you. I think these are great, but once again, is this unfunded mandates on the part of the state?
That is correct.
Just wish the governor would send money sometimes when he orders us to do these things.
Sure, and they're actually, now that I'm looking down at my report on the screen, there are two things that I would also like to talk about. We've been in communication with a consultant to help us write our Smart Bonds Act, so that's $1.7 million that's available to us for safety and security, as well as technology. If timing goes well, we hope to leverage some of that in our next capital project. The timing should work out well. In addition, last night, the Wellness Committee met for the first time. We're going to be meeting again. There are people that are on the Wellness Committee, but the Wellness Committee meetings are open to the public. Anybody could attend, and those meeting dates and times are posted on our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Napoli. And the Assistant Superintendent for Curricular and Instruction, Mrs. Arbina Medina.
So I would like to bring to your attention some information that was included in my report. My Brothers Keeper update. I included two pictures from a trip that eighth-grade students made to Marist College. It was a great opportunity for the middle school students to get a taste of what college life was like. And evidently, college dorm rooms have gotten larger. They were able to fit in almost the entire class in one room, which was very impressive. We have two more trips planned, SUNY Ulster and to SUNY Sullivan. Those will be fifth-grade students, and they'll be attending those trips to those campuses on the 17th of May and June 4th. A Boost Academy update. When I completed my report, I had 64 students enrolled, well, 64 students' parents who responded positively that they would like to have their children participate in the program. But since that time, I've received at least 20 more. So we are well on our way to doubling the enrollment of the inaugural academy of 2017 with the 2018 class, so it's all moving along very, very well. I'm tickled. Part of what has made this round successful, or more successful than last, has a lot to do with learning the lessons from the last time around. So I included in my report a bit of the timeline that I'm working with. We're at the point right now where, as of this Friday, if students have not, or their parents have not positively responded to the invitation, we'll be doing some reach-out by, or outreach by phone, talking with parents, answering questions that they might have about the program, trying to encourage them to participate. We did have a little bit of a change in location due to construction, but actually, the Plan B is actually better than Plan A. So I think things have worked out really well as far as that is concerned, so stay tuned. We'll be wrapping up the recruitment for the class very shortly. And by the 8th of June, we shall be finalizing class lists. We'll be able to provide parents with bus stop locations and let them know that they have been accepted into the program. So it's all moving very well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, personnel resolutions, we're up to the resolutions. So we're voting tonight on our computers also, so I guess it's going to require a little bit more patience than usual. Okay, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the following appointments. Be it resolved, where applicable, such appointments are conditioned upon the district's receipt of clearances for employment from the State Education Department relating to the fingerprinting and criminal history record checks. 6.1. Oh, where is it?
What if it's not on their screen? Is it on your screen to vote? Not yet.
Not voting, but the resolution is.
Yeah, it is.
No, I didn't. I don't have the resolution here. Go down, yeah.
She clicked on the person's name.
It's up in the top, we'll go to the different tab, up in the top.
So you canceled that? Oh, there it is, okay. Sorry about that. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, be it resolved that Kristen Jacobs be appointed substitute cafeteria monitor at a rate of $11 per hour worked, substitute clerical at a rate of $95 per day worked, and substitute teacher aide at a rate of $77 per day worked for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved, second.
John?
I don't have it here.
They don't have it to vote?
Oh, here it comes. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. I think so, didn't everyone? So this is at the top?
Now it is.
Okay, this is 6.2, I believe, yeah? Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, be it resolved that Tyler Albert be appointed substitute cleaner at a rate of $1,350 per hour worked for the 2017-18 school year.
So it's up there, but after the vote, it's there to get first and second it.
You're done?
Yes.
She has to ask for a discussion.
I'm sorry.
We're just going to check something.
Are we ready to go on to the next one? And I can't forget the discussion piece. So we have to vote on 6.2. All those in favor? Opposed? Passed. Okay, that was the substitute cleaner, right? Okay, so now on 6.3. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, be it resolved that the resignation of Josephina Lavia, teaching assistant, be accepted for the purposes of retirement effective June 30th, 2018, with regret.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's, I think what we'll do first, and it's call the vote first, and then we'll do the... Are we ready to go on to the next?
Well, the vote results are not up there yet. Now they are, now you can move on.
Be it resolved that the resignation of Elena Quick, elementary teacher, be accepted for the purposes of retirement effective June 30th, 2018, with regret.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Are we going to wait or just keep going? I'm just going to keep track of the vote. Should we just keep going? Yeah.
6.5. Be resolved that the resignation of Sherry House, math teacher, be accepted effective June 30th, 2018, with regret.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? We're going to move along and...
Hold on a second, are you recording?
Be resolved that a 1.0 full-time FTE special ed teacher position be created and approved.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? 6.7. Be resolved that the appointment of George Jones, junior cleaner, be made permanent following a successful probationary period of six months effective May 15th, 2018.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. 6.8. Be it resolved that Jill Furman be appointed home tutor at a contractual rate of $55 per hour worked for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Willie?
I'm sorry, Madam Vice President, I don't have that resolution. I have two 6.7s.
You do?
I do. I do have that resolution, suddenly, but I still have two 6.7s.
Working out the kinks.
But our current resolution is 6.8, right? So, I agree. Yes, please.
Okay, thank you, Willie. 6.9. Be it resolved that the resignation of Victoria Turner, library assistant, be accepted effective May 18th, 2018, with regret.
So moved, second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? 6.10. Be it resolved that based upon the selections made by the mentor team, which consists of 51% teachers appointed by the ETS RPA, the board approves the following mentors and an annual stipend of $1,000 to be prorated in contingent on required training effective May 9th, 2018, through June 30th, 2018. And the mentor is Lamarck Logan, and the mentee is Kimberly Rick...
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Whatever's there.
6.11s. Be it resolved that the memorandum of agreement between the Ellenville Central School District and the ETS RPA teachers unit be approved as attached?
So moved, second.
Discussion? All those in favor? This is the first reading for policies of...
Move 7.1 in its entirety?
Second.
Okay, it's for policies 6,000, 7,000, and 8,000. Sorry. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Resolve that the attached list of student IPs be acknowledged as appropriate, and there are 65.
Motion to move 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And the construction resolutions?
Motion to move 9.1 through 9.8?
Discussion? All those in favor? 10.1. Resolve that the contracts providing health and welfare services for the Ellenville Central School District in the amount indicated below be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. 10.2. Resolve that the Ulster County School Boards Association membership dues for the 2018-2019 school year be approved in the amount of $700. That represents a $100 increase.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
I had a discussion point, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Madam Superintendent, I know that sometimes I get called on questioning BOSI's increases. And while this is not a lot of money, it's a decent-sized increase in one year. Do we also pay New York State School Board Association dues?
Yes. So this is, we pay New York State School Boards dues that gives us the availability for all the trainings and so forth, and advocacy. This is a local countywide agency. They have, I believe they have quarterly meetings now where they bring professional development in and do other things. And I know we put those agendas in your meeting. Sometimes I know that they have legislators come talk to the Ulster County School Board. So this is in addition to the state dues.
And are we, a 15% increase? And are we still in favor of asking the... I'm good with it.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? John?
No, I was with it, I'm sorry.
And that wraps it up for this evening. Just a reminder that the budget vote is 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 in the evening in this room in the media center on May 15th. And our next regular meeting is May 22nd. And I think that's it, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? No discussion. Opposed? We're good? We're done. Thank you, everyone.